The views, information and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives or its employees.
Could I have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda as presented? Thank you. Counselor Vroba, seconded by Counselor Clark. Any questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, could I have a motion, please, to accept the minutes of the council meeting held on October 18th, 21? Thank you. Counselor Wally, sir. Seconded by Counselor Cernick. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations and petitions, we have with us this evening, she must be outside, or I guess she's on here, okay, Christina Zardo. She's with Food Cycle Science Corporation.
Fantastic. So thanks again for having me, Mayor and Council. My name is Christine Zardo. I'm here on behalf of Food Cycle Science's municipal solutions team. And I'd like to do a presentation of about 10 minutes with a few minutes at the end for any questions you might have with me. So Food Cycle Science is a Canadian company. We are based out of the nation's capital here in Ottawa. And we're 100% focused on providing food waste diversion solutions using our innovative technology called the Food Cycler. It's an in-home food recycler. And it's also directed consumers through partners like Vitamix and Revel. But we sell to municipalities through our municipal team here. And we help mainly small rural, remote and northern communities keep food waste out of their landfills. We currently have 18 Canadian municipalities as partners across five provinces and territories. Some examples are Nelson in DC, Pice 135 in Alberta, and the city of Kenora here in Ontario. Now, the problem with food waste, of course, is that it is avoidable. It accounts for a very large portion of our household waste, often a majority. And it's made up of mostly liquid, which is heavy reasons in the winter. And on top of that, having food waste in landfills is responsible for generating harmful greenhouse gases. So all of these factors make it so that food waste is a problem that has a strong municipal impact. And one of those impacts to municipalities is that because it makes up such a large portion of our waste stream, it causes our landfills to fill up quickly. Landfill extensions, post-closure monitoring and waste services in general are all major costs to municipalities. The environmental impact, like I mentioned, is that organic waste in landfills produces methane gas, which is many times more harmful than CO2. And in our communities, putting food waste in the garbage causes odors, which are unpleasant for us, of course, but they are interesting to critters like raccoons or bears that might be attracted to our properties with our waste left outside. So removing food waste from the garbage eliminates these issues, it reduces volume, and this can save the municipality on waste management costs, trips to the landfill, et cetera. So we often get asked, haven't we solved this already? You know, there are green bins, curbside programs. These are common in big cities with high population density and that have the infrastructure. But this isn't a solution for everyone. And many people in your community might use a backyard composter, which we think is a great solution. But it's not for everyone. It's, you know, can be labor-intensive, it may be seasonal. So it's just the concern that is still there about odor and animals, so it's also not for everyone. And then finally, we can continue to landfill our food waste. That's the easiest solution, but the long-term impacts are costly and harmful to the environment. So at Food Cycler, we've proposed a different way to deal with our food waste, which focuses on making it very easy to deal with and with a great user experience. Essentially, we've built a small kitchen appliance, about the size of a bread machine, where you put in your food waste, and that can include meat, poultry, fish, even some bones. You push a button, and in a matter of hours, you have a nutrient-rich soil amendment that comes out. Each cycle will take four to eight hours to complete and uses less than one kilowatt-hour of power. The by-product that comes out is a sterile biomass that you can use in gardening, landscaping applications. It can be used by local farmers. It could even be pelletized to be used as an alternative source of home heating. You can use the machine anywhere with a plug. Most people have it in their kitchen basement or even a heated garage. So from an environmental standpoint, the Food Cycler compares to backyard composting and central composting without transportation of machines factoring in, of course. It represents an approximate reduction of 95% versus sending food waste to landfill, though. And each Food Cycler can divert at least two tons over its lifetime and avoid 2.6 tons of CO2 equivalents. From an economic standpoint, our solution offers a return on investment by significantly reducing your waste management costs. You have less disposal, lower operating costs, and you can achieve higher diversion without implementing costly curbside green bin programs. Now, one thing that we've learned from working with our municipal partners is that their residents are very interested in being part of the solution. They want to try new things. They want options. And they want their government to bring these things to their community. With the Food Cycler, you get to bring something innovative and tangible to your residents. They don't need to live in a very large city to be able to divert the organics. We believe that food waste diversion should be available to all Canadians, no matter where you live. And on top of this social pressure is the pressure from all levels of government to reduce waste and greenhouse gases associated with that. A Saskatchewan produces the second highest amount of waste in Canada and so has made waste reduction commitments of 30% by 2030 and 50% by 2040. With the Food Cycler, what we're doing is reducing food waste at the source. We're focusing on that low-hanging fruit, as I like to call it. Pun is intended there. And because it accounts for such a huge portion of our garbage, it's the single most impactful strategy to achieving these reduction targets. I mentioned earlier that we're working with several municipalities across Canada. One of those is the city of Nelson in DC. They ran two pilot projects with 250 households receiving a Food Cycler. The results were overwhelmingly positive. We received an average rating of 4.5 out of 5 stars for the solution, and we achieved a significant diversion of waste during that time that continues to this day. And after the success of those pilots, Nelson voted to put a Food Cycler in every home in their city of 10,000 people. Now, earlier this year, Food Cycler was selected as a semifinalist in Impact Canada's Food Waste Reduction Challenge. It's a three-part initiative from the government of Canada to reduce our country's food waste. We were awarded a prize of $100,000, and we were tasked with finding Canadian municipalities as implementation partners. So we're using this funding to invest directly into pilot projects at a subsidized rate. And these pilots will help us move into later stages of the challenge, which will come with more funding if successful. And any municipality that partners with us from stage one will have first right of refusal on subsequent funding. So a pilot program will typically run about 12 weeks. The residents will purchase a Food Cycler at their municipality at a subsidized rate. They'll use the unit, tracking the number of cycles that they run per week. And residents get to keep the Food Cycler at the end. And we ask them to complete a brief survey so that we can evaluate the program's success. We can then use that survey to support our future waste management decisions, program expansions, for which there are many grants available, including the FCM's Green Municipal Fund, for which we are pre-approved. So here's an overview of how the funded pilot programs work. They include our pilot size recommendations. And for a municipality of your size, we would recommend a pilot of about 250 households. They work based on a subsidy model. So a Food Cycler will retail for $500. Food Cycle Science provides a discount. And we add in the federal investment from Impact Canada to reduce that by 50%. We then ask the municipality to subsidize $100 per unit plus shipping, so that the resident only ends up paying $150 for a machine that retails at $500. And remember, after the 12-week pilot, they do get to keep their Food Cycler. I'd like to highlight, these are simply recommendations based on a model that has been well-received in other municipalities. We can, of course, explore other options that might work tailored to you for your size or your budget. But to give you a bit of insight, in the city of Kenora, with a city of 15,000 people, they just launched a 250-unit pilot, and they were fully subscribed within six days of opening registration. So we would happily welcome your municipality as a partner in this Food Waste Reduction Challenge. We believe your community would be a good fit for the benefits of this program. And I thank you so much for having me this evening. I'm prepared to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Counselor Vroba.
Thank you, Your Worship. I was just wondering, Christina, with the pellets after a household is done with them, do they bring them back anywhere in a municipality that you've already worked with? Or does each individual household just get rid of the pellets on their own?
Get rid of the pellets?
Yeah, the pellets that come out after you're done. You said that they can be used for different things. Do people save those and bring them back to the municipality? Or do they utilize them themselves?
Right. Thank you for your question. I'm sorry, I misunderstood for a moment there. So what comes out is a soil amendment. It kind of looks like fertilizer or dirt, and you can use it for many different things. So you can mix it in with your soil if you're a gardener, with your potted plants, in landscaping. And many communities will set up kind of local farmers to receive the material because they, it's very beneficial for them. And we're also exploring using it to be pelletized for home heating. So there's a machine that functions well, and we've done kind of a contest with it. So many different options. You can keep it or use it as you wish. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Vroba. Any other questions from members of council? Seeing none. Thank you so much for the presentation, Christina, this evening. And if we have any questions, we can still get ahold of you perhaps tomorrow or at another more convenient time.
Yes, absolutely. My email is in the presentation and my phone number as well, so I welcome any questions after the fact. And thank you so much, once again.
Okay, thank you, Christina, and good evening. Okay, moving on to written reports of committees. We have from the Estevan Bruins, the executive report of September 20th. Do we have a motion to accept that, please? Okay, thank you. Counselor Ford, seconded by Counselor Frank. Anything you'd like to add, Counselor Ford, on the minutes or speak to?
No, nothing tonight, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under written reports of committees, we have from the Estevan Public Library, the minutes of September 21st and October 19th. Do we have a motion for those, please? Thank you, Counselor Vroba. Counselor Vroba, I'm thinking Counselor Vroba. Counselor Wally, sir, seconded by Counselor Vroba. Any questions or comments from the library? Go ahead, Counselor Wally.
Thanks, Your Worship. Just some things to highlight for the community. The library does remain open in this fourth wave, and they have been deemed an essential service. So people who perhaps aren't able to access services elsewhere, there is not a vaccine passport requirement at the public library. So there is still in-person and online options available. They've also launched a little pantry, so people that are there can take what they need or leave what they can to try and increase food security in our community. The other thing I wanted to highlight is that there will be a Christmas book sale from December 3rd to 5th. The book sales are typically the library's biggest fundraiser of the year, and they're currently accepting book donations to be sold at that fundraiser. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Wally, sir. Any questions on that? If not, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under executive reports, we have from the Parks Manager, and thank you, Rod, for coming this evening. We have the Pathway Update Report. This is a dynamic project with multiple aspects, ongoing and adaptations as we progress toward the finish line. A final report will be submitted as the field season nears completion. The pathway project is moving along with significant progress made on most of the milestones. Our priority is the earthwork prior to unfavorable weather conditions approaching. We have all of the concrete works complete. All the asphalt that can be done this year is complete. Quality inspections are ongoing and will continue into next week. The milestones for this project, which were included in the application for funding, are detailed in the following seven items. And some of these are still ongoing. 13.2 kilometers of new pedestrian walkway segments, 10.5 meters, or kilometers, I'm sorry, removal of organic overburden to clay subbase and stockpiled for future use, alignment of route with lay of the land, 15 centimeters, three-quarter inch minus compacted gravel base, finished with 75 millimeters of asphalt surfacing at 2.5 meters finished width, 2.7 kilometers of concrete sidewalk construction, 1.6 inches barrier curb remainder in roll curb monolithic for 1.5 meters in width along street-side areas where asphalt is not suitable nor practical. Completed, some changes include additional 300 meters of concrete sidewalk with a barrier curb where it was determined after the site survey, the asphalt would not be suitable. One washroom facility located in southwest quadrant of pathway system, open common room for warm-up with a mechanical room, and two accessible washroom year-round facilities and all associated works. Okay, so the washroom isn't started as we're in the process of retiring the old utilities at the Westview site to make room for the new building. The permit was received last week. To proceed with the works, budgets will be reviewed after contractor submissions next week to determine the scope of this space. One footbridge located over the creek in Main Valley of Highway 39, 15.5 meters in length, three meters wide, pedestrian arched bridge on concrete, superstructure avoiding riparian zones of the non-fish-bearing creek. Installation of concrete box culvert scheduled for Friday. I think that's already in, Rod, right?
Yes, Your Worship, it is.
The culvert option was more economical and less challenging for this type of installation. This section of pathway will need asphalt next season, as it's getting too late in the fall for application of surfacing. 15 blue imp-style benches located throughout the finished pathway system in strategic location for view and rest points. No benches are installed yet, but we will purchase with the remaining budget or other funding sources and, depending on weather, install either this fall or the spring of '22. Solar-powered path lighting placed throughout the project area. The lighting will cover three kilometers of the pathway where no other source of lighting currently exists, primarily within the south sections. Solar lighting is last purchased, depending on finances available. We have purchased some, which will be installed this fall. We suspect patrons will want more of this area illuminated. This will be recommended for future, again, for consideration in future budget deliberations as well as grant opportunities. Improved street and railway crossings for safety and accessibility under Long Creek rail line trestle, safety corridor. And we'd like to thank Long Creek, they've been very good to work with. CP, we won't get into that at this time. We're still working with them on Kensington. Everything is a big deal. But anyway, a control point exists between the rail and the highway necessitating specialized passage design through the trestle while keeping pedestrians and vehicular traffic safe. 100 meters in length and three meters wide with retaining wall and security fencing site or site-specific signage along the corridor and all associated works. All pathway signage is either purchased or in production for installation into November. Long Creek trestle crossing completed, a major undertaking. And again, CP rail application is in with them. They have advised, it's a six-month process. Engineering, architectural, geotech assessments, design work currently underway on all aspects of this project and all associated works. All design and engineering work is completed. There have been challenges with implementing a three-year plan project in one year. Rod and our management team have done a tremendous job in making this already pretty much all Given this, as provincial and federal funding combined, not all the recipient requirements are known until the last minute. And this was approved March 21 with a short season to get everything in order. Most notably, the requirement for First Nations consultation. The funding agreement made it clear, we were not to proceed until we obtained that, which was done. Other challenges included limited bidder submissions on major works, unknown and unsuitable subsurface materials and utilities, private land boundaries, private crossing negotiations, control points, steep locations, and at times, weather delays. These aspects add time, money and resources to the bottom line. We've encountered several issues along the corridor and dealt with them accordingly. Our next steps in this project include GPS, global positioning, the entire network, and creating an interactive map for users to follow. This will include locations of amenities, trash receptacles, bench locations, dog waste dispensers, et cetera. Alternate routes for those not equipped or confident in navigating steep sections. Specific sections will remain steep, others will have stairs. This is intentional, as there is little room to navigate through some of these areas, and people want to exercise benefits of these steeper walking sections. Rod's working with the Public Works Division in determining the best method of winter maintenance on these areas. Considering the recent Supreme Court ruling on municipal liabilities and snow clearing, consideration should be given to closing specific difficult areas in the winter to avoid issues. We do this now in some of the existing pathways. The response from the community has been overwhelmingly positive. I've received inquiries from organizations wanting to purchase benches, litter containers, and we'll work with these groups as we finalize the details. In 2022, I expect additional expenditures and additional requests from patrons wanting to add little connector sections here and there, as well as requests to add lighting to all areas. This is something we can work with, with sponsorship, and in discussions with the new marketing manager on how this might look. Additionally, we'll pursue applicable grants and funding opportunities. We will also need to address the outcome of CP rail, and we'll see how that goes. There will be some cleanup and erosion control required in some sections of the network. It is too late in the season to apply any organic solutions to erosion potential. This will be a spring application. I will have a better indication of the financial details once we're complete this season. We're still going strong and trying to get everything done before December 31st. And that has been respectfully submitted by Rod March. So again, thank you so much, Rod, for the tremendous job you and the staff have done and the management team, and I know Kafloon is helping as well, and Jeff, and everyone's put their shoulder to the wheel, so thank you so much for that. Any questions or comments from members of council? Counselor Clark?
Thanks, Your Worship. Thanks for a great job. Really appreciate what's been accomplished there. For some of the additional things that are gonna, people are gonna have requests for and that, what would be the best way to set that up? Is the best to call the city main line and start that and have, you know, if somebody thinks, hey, we need extra, another pathway to join here? Do you have a plan on where we should be directing people to or how we should do that?
Thank you, Counselor Clark, for the question. Sure, and there's been many discussions with the public on different areas. The original plan was 17 kilometers, which included a few little connectors here and there. My goal was twofold. One, to make it safer for pedestrians to navigate around the city, which is why some of this is sidewalk. The second was to make sure we encompass the city for those who want to have that experience of getting around in a full circular loop. So those were the two things. And while doing that, I noticed there's a lot of places that, even speaking with citizens, say, why, can't you just connect these two over here? Well, there's private property issues that we'd have to negotiate, either a lease or purchase property, that sort of thing. So we know there's a lot of inquiries in terms of how it's dealt with right now. I'm just keeping a log of everything. Our new marketing manager and I have been speaking about this, how we can do it somewhat effectively through our web-based inquiries. But for right now, I'm just keeping a log of everything, and I'll bring that to council once we're finished the initial stage of this project.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clark, any other questions from members of council? Counselor Vroba.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, the pathways are great. Some of those hills are steep. I tried one, and probably now I'll just turn around and wait till I'm in better shape to do another. But there was one person who had a concern regarding down by the Humane Society, the Casa Clara Apartments. They said that there was some posts going up there, and they thought it was kind of hindering, like two cars going around that corner at one time. But I assured them that we probably hadn't taken away any road space.
You're absolutely right, Counselor Vroba. We did not take any space from the street. What we were doing there is separating the vehicle traffic from pedestrian traffic, and we're doing that safely. So you will see a barrier fence there as well as bright yellow parking curbs that will line that area to ensure that traffic do not even try to cross that boundary, because it's a bit of a safety. And the reason being is that when Genco did it, they brought the pathway right to the existing street. They were asked to keep a separation like everywhere else, but they thought at the time there wasn't enough room for overland water flow, so they joined it there. And that's why we have to separate it now with an engineering control.
Okay, good. That's good. And then one other section was the Perkins Street, First Street to McDonald. That would be a great area for a little connector there, because when you're walking down Perkins, you basically have to go down McDonald if you want to go on a pathway or sidewalk, instead of being able to go straight down Perkins.
Yes, that's another piece of the puzzle that was intended to go in, but again, with the funding, I wanted to make sure we
100%.
Circle that loop around Buffalo Lookout first.
Yeah, and people are raving about that, and the kids are loving it, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Vroba. Any other questions, comments? Go ahead, Counselor Ford.
Thanks, Your Worship, and thanks so much for all you've done on this. I can't imagine all the work you've done. And I'm sure you've walked around that a couple times already, all 13 kilometers. Actually, just a comment, maybe, and I've had this question a number of times, I'm sure everybody else has, about the naming of the pathways. It is a project we are working on that is something that is kind of in the works and it's just telling everyone to kind of hold tight on it, because there is going to be a plan for it.
Thank you, Counselor Ford. Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you so much, Rod. Please thank your team and all of the other managers for their exceptional work on this project. Very well done.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Next, under executive reports, we have another hard-working man, Shane Bushes, can step up to the plate. I'll quickly go over. The water tower, we're finally coming to getting her fixed up. It was built in the mid-'50s. During that time, it served as a main water storage. But as the city grew, other reservoirs have been bought online to be used as one of our current three water storage facilities. The tower is beginning to show fatigue, and rehabilitation is required. The water tower is the best backup storage we can have. In the event of a power outage, the water is already in the tower. In the event of a power outage, the water is already in the tower. It can provide water pressure to the city, eliminating the city from issuing a boil-water advisory. The storage of the tower is also used as calculation for fire suppression. Costs of replacing the tower with underground storage would be two to three times the cost of rehabilitating the tower. The tender package was for all relevant work that was required. We put the welding and prep work at five days. We won't know the extent of the work until the sandblasting is complete. As part of the tender, I set a daily rate for work, and it would extend, and if it would extend past five days. If this work extends past five days, it will be over and above the cost of the tender that would be at a set fixed rate. A tender package was created for the tower and put on SASC tenders on September 22, 21. We had a mandatory site visit October 5, 21, and the tender clause was extended to answer all questions fully. On October 21, 21, I reviewed the tenders in Regina office at KGS. Below is the tender breakdown from tenders we received. So we had three bidders. We had 1.4 million from commercial sandblasting and painting out of Saskatoon. We had from PCL out of Regina, 2.261 million and $676, and then Icon Industrial Group, 3.9 million and, well, 45,000. So the commercial sandblasting had fulfilled all bid details as requested. Their schedule was aggressive but realistic. Reasonable labor rates and references. They've had ten water towers under their belt. PCL Construction Management had not fulfilled all the bid details as requested. They have not received all the addenda. Their schedule was long but realistic. Reasonable labor rates, references did not match up to this project. Icon Industrial Group, and not all the bid details are requested. They have not received all the addenda, had no bid bond, and no consent absurdity. Their schedule was reasonable. They had very high labor rates. The additional rates from sub-trades was extremely high. References were expected. Options and solutions with the tenders we received, I and KGS would suggest going with commercial sandblasting and painting to complete the work at 1.405, $1,405,050 excluding taxes. They were the lowest cost and met all the criteria. Their rates for welding, prep, and cleaning for work, if it needs to be increased, were the lowest, and this is within the budget of the project. So again, thank you for that, Shane. We'll open the floor to questions or comments from council. Counselor Frank?
Thanks, Your Worship. Just curious, just probably to city manager, just what, I know we have grant funding for this, is there a number that we have, or is there, this is a third, a third, a third situation?
Thank you, Counselor Frank. No, this is related to the gas tax. These are funds that we've allocated and actually put into a separate bank account. We do have $2 million set aside, as that was some of the initial estimates, on getting this completed. I know there is some electrical that needs to be done at the Smith Street reservoir along with the tower upgrades, so it would be separate, but this is separated into a separate bank account, but it is under the federal gas tax program.
Basically all of it then is perfect. Thank you.
Yeah, okay, thank you, Counselor Frank, city manager. And yeah, we've put aside 2 million, and this will cost around 1.4, and then for the other six, we have other requirements the city manager has requested. Electrical motors that have to be updated, so that will probably take most of the other 600. Shane, did you have any other questions or comments that you'd like to add?
While the tower is down, people should notice no difference in their pressure or anything. Actually, when we run off the tower, it's 10 PSI less than if we're running on the Smith Street pumps. So in the event of a power outage, that would be the only time residents would notice a decrease in pressure, but we would still have enough pressure to hold so that we wouldn't have issue of boil water.
Okay, thank you for that, Shane. Any other questions or comments? If not, thank you again, Shane. I know we've been working on this for a while. Thank you for your efforts, and you and the rest of the management team did a fantastic job. Thank you. Oh, now we have a question.
I'm just gonna make the motion to proceed with it.
Oh, so, thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Okay. So we have, well, second it, Counselor Wallezer. Any further questions or comments? If not, all in favor. Carrie, thank you. I think I'm breathing in too much CO2.
I knew you were gonna ask me a question.
I thought you were. Thank you for that. I've been doing too much reading. Next, we have another one of our managers stepping up to the plate. Richard, thank you for coming tonight. As you remember, at the council meeting previous, the question was raised about this 418 Kensington. It was referred to the Traffic Board. We met as the Traffic Board, and I guess before I get to that, I'm jumping ahead here. We've got the police commissioners, right, city clerk?
Nope.
Okay, no, that's right. It is 418. Okay. So, Richard, did you want to go over that at all?
Thank you, Worship and council. As this is intended to be a follow-up to what happened at the October 26 meeting, we were asked to look into alternatives to the laneway option as an alternative access. So went to the Traffic Committee, and thank you, Your Worship, for helping speed the timing of that meeting up. I think you chopped about three weeks off of what it would have been, and that's much appreciated. So the Traffic Committee met on it, and the laneway can work, but we looked at whether what could be some other alternatives. And one alternative was to reform the existing access to be a right turn in, and then somewhere close to the southeast corner of the property to put a right turn out back onto Kensington. And then that would maintain the closure on the laneway access, the same as it is for the church to the north. That border with the lane is completely fenced off with a chain, and so it would be consistent that way. And so you have the previous recommendation. Here's a recommendation that would allow for the access onto Kensington. And so what it would be is, instead of condition two, which under the former recommendation had opening up the laneway, this one here would replace it, and it would say that the existing access would have to be reconfigured to a right turn in access only. So that would be for southbound traffic on Kensington. And then a new right turn out access would be constructed near the southeast corner of that property to allow for vehicles to exit onto Kensington Avenue, again, going southbound. One consequence of this is, this would then prohibit anybody coming out of that property to go northbound on Kensington. So you may have an instance where people want to go to the mall, and with the laneway option, they would probably take the lane. In this case, they're heading southbound, and they may turn onto Rooney and then go that way. The access would then, if this is approved, would be installed to city standards. Engineering would have to deal with the city standards in this case. I have it in here that the access would also have to be installed at the developer's expense, and that it would have to be completed by no later than August 31 of next year. That would give them a construction season, not including warranty period. With that, Your Worship, would you like to open it up if there's any questions or anything to this alternative?
Okay, thank you, Richard, for that. And yeah, I know council, when we discussed this, had some concerns about the laneway, so that should be mitigated. It's right turn in and right turn out, which should make it actually somewhat simpler. Okay, Counselor Clark, then Counselor Vroba?
Thanks, Your Worship. I'm just, Living Hope Church, are they the same way, right turn in and right turn out? Or do they?
No, there's this dual. You can go both ways on Living Hope, yes.
And that's the reason that they would probably not want it? They don't want another one in that close proximity?
The last time the city undertook a traffic evaluation, traffic study, was in 2015. That was, I guess, right at the cusp of when you were, you're a real rapid growth spurt. And one of the topics that that study did not cover was access management onto Kensington. How many, because there's, if you remember, if you go southbound on Kensington, there was a number of properties that have multiple accesses. I don't think any of them have more than two, but there's a number of them that have two, and those accesses are full, that you can go either direction on Kensington out of them. So when I discuss this with engineering, the right turn, right turn out would be, I guess, a first step, you know? And then at some point, I definitely think that the city should probably undertake some kind of an access management program for our arterials.
Okay, good point, Richard.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Counselor Clark. Counselor Vroba?
Thank you, Worship. I'm just not quite grasping why we would make one business on Kensington only have the ability to go one way, whereas their neighbors on both sides or down the street can go either way.
This is what was recommended by engineering, and I think, as I said before, this would be the first step in going towards an access management plan for that, for that street?
Yeah.
Sorry, for that avenue?
Yeah, also, Counselor Vroba, part of the problem in that particular place with this 418 Kensington, there's not a lot of room there. So if you leave, if you go into that area with a right turn and leave with a right turn, you won't have the confluence of traffic running into each other and near misses and maybe even some accidents, because there's not a lot of room in there in front of that building.
Yeah, I guess I could, so you're saying the reason for, I get, I get the whole entering, right turn only, but when I leave, I can leave out of every other property on that side of the street and cross in to the traffic. But if I leave that one, do you know what I mean, Richard?
Yes.
Like, when you, you enter, I can understand what you want is on that property to have traffic flow, but when I exit from that property, it's just not making sense to me why every other property on that side of the street can cross the traffic and go either way, but that one can't.
I, as I said, this is, this is going in part for a step to the future. One of the things that engineering and myself, what we looked at on this was between Nesbit and King, the number of accesses is in and off that street that are already there. This right turn, right turn out, that would be in keeping actually with the access that's close to the grasshopper. That is one where, if you're going southbound on Kensington, there's one access there that you cannot make, well, you can do it, but it's not a proper
That was a private
Left-hand turn, right?
Right.
So it's going in that direction. I do realize this is an ad hoc recommendation from engineering in my department, but we believe that it would be a step forward in the right direction in, because we don't have a proper traffic study on there right now.
Do you not think it would be better that if you're gonna, moving forward down the road, implement that for all businesses on Kensington, at that time, implement it for this business too? Like, I just think, if you went right now and had a chair and sat and watched that grasshopper entrance, you will find that most people turn onto there, no matter which way they're coming. So it's really not working. Like, I don't know, I just feel like we're trying to do something right now with one business, and we're not going to implement it with anyone else, and it's going to cause confusion for people leaving that business.
I regret, Counselor Vroba, that city engineer isn't present here today, because on something of this technical nature, he'd be more qualified to answer a question like that than I would be.
But the whole idea, and thank you for that, Richard, Counselor Vroba, is the fact for access egress, it's a lot safer, it's a lot easier if they follow those guidelines, because it is narrow. You park your vehicle, you don't have a lot of room between where your vehicles are parked and that building.
Oh, I 100% agree with you, Worship, but when, so going in, I totally get the traffic flow when I'm in that property, but when I'm leaving the property, it really has no bearing on anything that's in the property. Like, so coming in should be a right turn only, or like, coming in that way should only be one way in, but even for turning in, if I'm coming in right there, I can turn into any other property on Kensington. But if I'm coming north, then what we're saying is I can't turn into that property.
You can only get in on a right turn from Kensington, you can only leave with a left turn onto, or a right turn onto Kensington.
Yeah, and see, to me, that, that recommendation came from engineering, not the Traffic Board, right?
No, we, we had agreed to that at the Traffic Board.
Engineering was present at the traffic meeting. They were invited to it, and they offered, the department offered their views at that meeting.
And what did the landowner say?
The landlord, the landowner, when we first went into this and mentioned that we wanted a second way out of there, the right turn out was talked about at that point, and he didn't have too much in the way of objection to it. The right turn out on Kensington was also brought forward when the building was originally constructed.
And I think, Counselor Vroba, it's still better than the back alley, because if you go the back alley, and I know we had concerns here that night,
Yeah.
Some of those condos, they can reach out and touch a vehicle.
Yeah.
So I think from a point of view of safety, this is still probably the best. And after we have this study, I think you'll see that they'll probably recommend that same type of access egress all the way down Kensington.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of it if it was the entire, if everyone down Kensington was in the same level playing field, but I just feel that this one is going to be different than the rest. But yeah, that's just my opinion.
Yeah, if we, if we agree to it tonight, why don't we, again, it's a living, breathing document. Council can always, at their will, if we're going to see problems, can, you know, revamp it, so.
Yeah, I would make a motion that we go with the entrance and exit on Kensington versus the alley. I'm 100% in favor of that. I'm just not wrapping my head around the other portion of it, but.
Okay, well, why don't we wait and see, monitor, and then we can always revisit it.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Counselor Frank, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, I guess my one thought, just kind of worked off of what Counselor Vroba had said, Your Worship, was with the existing entrance, it's wide enough to do both in and out on there, I guess, and this might be what you were referring to when this was originally built. Would it be just more economical for them and simpler if we add a right turn out that's only an out, but leave the existing entrance, both an entrance and exit? Would that be feasible? Is that just creating more headaches? I guess that's, there's a lot of things to consider there, but that would be my simple solution.
I think part of the problem that we have there is the whole idea behind this concept was to fill that property up. Once that property's filled up, you're going to have a lot more traffic flow, and that parking, right now, where you have one or two vehicles, will probably be three-quarters or more full. So with that congestion, that's where the problem comes in.
Inside the parking lot.
Right, right now, you think, well, that's no problem, and it won't be.
Yeah.
But once some people, once they fill that with residents, I think that's what they're looking at could be a potential problem.
Fair point. Appreciate that.
Okay, no problem. So we've got a motion. Have we got a second? Okay, thank you, Counselor Cernick. Any further questions? If not, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Thank you, Richard, for coming in. Okay, next, under introduction of bylaws, we have Bylaw 2021-2049, amend and establish a Board of Police Commissioners first reading. So the Board of Police Commissioners, we looked at the older bylaw that was passed in 2001, and we would like council to consider changing the terms on the Board Members-at-Large appointments from one year to two years to ensure consistency and bring the required knowledge needed at the board level and enable the fall education schedule to be fully realized. So at this time, if council is all right with it, we would like to ask for first reading. Then we'll advertise for a couple weeks and then bring it back to council. So tonight, I would like to ask for first reading of Bylaw 2021-2049, amend and establish a Board of Police Commissioners first reading. Thank you, Counselor Ford. Seconded by Counselor Clark, thank you. Seconded by Counselor Clark, thank you. Any further discussion? Counselor Vroba?
I just wanted to bring up the fact that this will also help for any council members that aren't on the police board. This year, we'll be voting in for two new members at large on the police board. Those two members would stay on for two years. Counselor Clark and I have one year left in our term on the police board. So next year, two new councillors would go on the police board. That way, every other year, you would have two new people on the police board, so.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor Vroba. That way, we would have some consistency, and that's what the RMs do. They have elections every off-years with only half. So I think that would make sense. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Wallezer.
Your worship, I'm not sure that I'm reading point one correctly. It states that two other members of council and two members-at-large be appointed annually by council? Is that what we're referring to in that we're appointing annually but staggered for the two-year term?
Okay, no, good point. It should be the members-at-large, right, city clerk?
No, everybody's going to be appointed two years.
Okay, well, that's kind of an internal council thing, though. We kind of said we would go from four to two as a council. I don't know if we needed that in the bylaw. I thought the intention of the bylaw was to just have the members-at-large, Counselor Vroba?
Yeah, and I think you're right, your worship. I think what Counselor Wallezer is saying is exactly what I'm thinking, too, is that it's the members-at-large to be appointed bi-annually, or like, so every other year, you'd appoint two. So Counselor Clark and I were appointed last year. So now, next year will be the end of our two years. This year, the members-at-large go on. So in two years, so it would be 2024, then they would get put on, 2023. They would get put on, the members-at-large. So every other year, you're going to have the appointment of two counts, two members.
Members-at-large.
Right, members-at-large, members of council, members-at-large.
Your worship, to Counselor Vroba, but in 2024, you will reappoint council.
Right.
And two new members. Do you know what I mean?
I'm seeing your point now, too, because annually, you are going to be appointing two people. It'll be, it'll be different, too. We're back to exactly the way it should be ordered.
Okay. Does that, thank you, city clerk, does that address? I guess it does, Counselor Wallezer?
Yeah.
Okay. Super. Did we pass that? All in favor? I think we've got the motion, right? All in favor? Carrie. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, under public hearings and reports tonight, we have none. Giving notice, we have none. Motions from committee, we have none. Consideration of bylaws, we have no more consideration of bylaws. Inquiries, Counselor Vroba.
Thank you, worship. I have two inquiries tonight. The first was a person who inquired about where our recycling goes. This person had an inquiry as to whether or not our recycling goes directly to the landfill, which it does not. I reassured them it does not. And I asked if the city manager could look into that for me just to make sure that the majority of the recycling, because there is some that could become contaminated. But I was reassured, too, that even the contaminated stuff is sorted. And then basically, what has to go to landfill from there goes to landfill. But anything that's recyclable and not contaminated goes to recycling.
Yep, that's right, Counselor Vroba.
And the other one for the second inquiry was, I had a gentleman who asked about the road going into the city yard, and why was the city allowed to put a private sign up? So he wanted to know whether or not the city had the authority to hang that sign. And I've been speaking with the city manager, and the city does have the authority to hang that sign. And it will be coming to the next council meeting with the details for that, so.
Absolutely, Counselor Vroba. Council has that authority. And part of the problem, when you take that roadway, number one, it not only goes to the city yards, but also where we keep our gravel, where we keep our crushed pavement. So there's really no need for anyone to go in there. I know they can, from time to time, use it to go to the diamonds there, but not necessary.
Right, there's alternative routes, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we brought to next council meeting just for the official approval, to make sure that all of the ducks are in row for that, but that that sign is there, and it is a private road into the city yard, and the public should not be utilizing it. The same as the fire hall, the public should not be utilizing that as a thoroughfare either, so.
That's correct, and we have signatures to that effect. And anyone that wants to not obey the signage can talk to that big gentleman in the back.
I didn't realize he came in, but yes, hello, chief.
The guy that's the size of two regular men. So we'll just leave that at that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Clark.
Thanks, your worship. I have an inquiry from a person that would like the traffic committee to look at. There's a two-way stop sign at the corner of 11th Avenue and 3rd Street, right by the police station. They would like to see if they could change that to a four-way stop. The issue is from Valley Street heading up on 11th Avenue, as there is no stoppage to that traffic at all. So the traffic, basically, from 11th Avenue can come right through at 40 and 50 kilometers an hour, and it's kind of a busy corner. Her request would be that it go to a four-way stop. So I told her I would ask the traffic committee.
Okay, we will refer that to the traffic committee, and that's 11th Ave. and 3rd Street.
Right, yes. That would be, so, yep, that's what I was looking for.
We did have a near miss. In fact, I think we might have even had an accident there. So we moved, that was yield, we moved those two signs to stop.
Yeah.
So now the request is move the other two to stop as well and make a four-way.
That's right.
Okay.
Yep. And the other thing, at the leisure, or at affinity place, the volunteers for the hockey teams, because they have a feed out on the ice of the game, they would like to see if they could put that feed so that they would at least be able to watch the hockey game on the TVs that are in the lobby. I think right now the TVs are off. Just if they could put it on there while the volunteers are working at the hockey games during the period when there's nobody coming in, they could see that.
That seems like a reasonable request. Counselor Clark, city manager?
Thank you, worship, counsel carson inquiry. So those monitors that are out in the atrium area, those are actually not owned by the city. They're part of Dutch Media Group to do advertising. But we have talked to IT, they'll be working with the Bruins for their feed, as well as the Bears, to get additional monitors put up there for the volunteers. So it's in the works.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Wallezer?
Thank you, your worship. 80% of those in our community over the age of 60 have stepped up and protected themselves and others by getting their COVID vaccine. Despite this, our community has gone without the Adult Day program at our hospital since March of 2020. Our seniors deserve the ability to access socialization opportunities that Day Hospital brings. As a member of the hospital board, I ask that your worship would tirelessly advocate for the resumption of this essential service. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Wallezer. I can definitely talk to Mr. Hofford, and if you like, I can send a letter signed by myself and request an answer. Absolutely. I know that's a worthwhile program. Absolutely. Okay, did you have anything else? Okay, thank you. Counselor Ford?
Thanks, your worship. No inquiries, just a comment. I was the guest of St. Mary's School last week for their Innovation Trade Show. They invited me as part of the Innovation Council. The grade eight class did this whole big innovation fair, and I had no idea what I was walking into, but there was kids that created lawnmowers that ran through their phones. They had one kid, or one group of kids, they created an app that outlined all the businesses in the city, all the parks, all their locations. They spent a lot of time on this, and I'd just like to say kudos to all the teachers and the parents and the kids who put their work into this. There's a lot of smart kids in this community.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for that, Counselor Ford, and thank you for attending. The notice was short, otherwise I would have been there. But, but yeah, we have some incredible people in our community, and we can't say enough about them. Thank you again for attending. Counselor Cernik?
Another time, worship.